If you wish to speak to any item on the agenda or during the public comment portion of the meeting, please fill out a speaker card. Each person addressing the board shall have three minutes to complete his or her comments on each agenda item for which he or she has filled out a card. The Chair has the discretion to determine or alter the time limits on any agenda item. The Board of County Commissioners requests that speakers appearing under the public comment section of the agenda limit their comments or presentations to matters relating to county business that are within the Board's control, authority, and jurisdiction.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the County Commission Meeting of Tuesday, August 6th. I'd like to call a meeting in order, and I would like to ask Pastor Keith Betcher to come on up with the affiliation of Central Florida Free Thought Community. Keith?
Not a pastor, but thank you.
That's okay. You can be one tonight.
Thank you, Commissioners and staff for having me. Today, may we take a moment to reflect on the values that unite us as a community and a nation. In this space, we are bound not by creed or doctrine, but by a commitment to the principles that transcend individual beliefs. We hold in common the ideals of democracy, the dignity of every person, the right to free expression, the pursuit of justice, and the relentless endeavor for equality. These principles guide us, challenge us, and call us to action. Let us pledge ourselves to the ongoing work of creating a society where every voice is heard, where the rule of law protects the weak as well as the strong, where differences are celebrated as strengths, and where the promise of liberty and opportunity is extended to all. May our deliberations today be infused with respect, compassion, and a shared purpose. Together, let us strive to build a future defined by cooperation, mutual respect, and a deep commitment to the common good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very well done. All right. Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Tobias, please.
Please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I guess so. I don't know.
Wow. Okay. You had an ad on there, Don, huh? With the flag up there. Very nicely done.
Yeah, I know. I should have walked.
There you go. All right. Do I have a motion? It does not say what minutes are... Do we have minutes to be approved here? I don't see any date on any commission meeting, so I'm going to... I'll pass through that. We don't have any resolutions or awards and presentations tonight. Consent agenda... Does the commission have any of the items on the consent agenda that would like to be polled, please?
Yes, sir. I'm good.
Commissioner Tobias?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will accept that, but we do have... We do have some speaker cards on that.
And I'll second that whenever you're ready.
Okay. Thank you so much. So, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, but there's some speaker cards, and let's go to F1. Assignment agreement on Associates to Half Associates Inc., Sandra Sullivan. Do you have comments you'd like to make, Sandra?
How many does she have?
Just three consents.
F1, F2, and F3?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sandra Sullivan's. South Patrick Shores. So, on F1, I'm very grateful for this... the work that this company has done, and I understand that they're being acquired. So, it's great that the county is amending this contract, and I would just like to point out some of their very good work. This is a 10-year flood plan for North Merritt Island. As we look to do the work and expand storm sewage on that, we need to pay attention to what is in their hydrology study that the county spent a half a million dollars on and actually use these reports instead of just all growth and not paying attention to the implications of growth in those areas. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. You might as well stand there, Sandra, because we have... I believe you have F2 also, or did...
This paper.
Okay. You got another one after this, so...
Sandra Sullivan. So, this one gives me so much heartburn. This is regarding the O'Gally muck project and changing the specification of work. So, this was a $26 million project that was for 750,000 of muck. It has been... And the quote came in for half of that amount, almost $50 million. The issue here is, rather than fixing what is causing this problem, is we're pumping muck 8.1 miles down to Palm Bay. That's what's causing the ridiculous price. So, instead, we're gonna... We're gonna play games, and we're gonna reduce the amount of muck they're gonna pump to 250,000 cubic yards. And we're gonna remove the interstitial cleanup, so the cleaning up of the nutrient loading that goes back into the lagoon, we're gonna take that out. Oh, but wait, it says, "We'll do a change order later and add it back in again." All it is is manipulating numbers to make something look good that is not good. This is... This project needs to be changed to reflect the overall problem, which is we're pumping muck 8.1 miles because you want to give Sarno to a city, the Sarno land that has historically been the place that we have put that muck. It isn't just this one project that we're talking... We're talking over $100 million just for this round and future costs, hundreds of millions of dollars, because we have a lot more projects in this vicinity. And this is just... This gives me a lot of hype, heartburn. The optics of this is not good at all. Thank you.
Okay. F3, Sandra Sullivan. Westgate Agreement between Westgate and Cocoa Beach Pier.
You know what this... Sandra Sullivan. So, what this county does for the developers, the backflips you do, just drives me nuts. So, Westgate, I don't know. Have you seen the news about them laying off a whole, like, 300 people or whatever? They're not doing so good. All right. So, this is... I want to give you an example. This is Spraw Park. This is for the sand re-nourishment project that we just had. Do you see how wide those projects are? They're not 20 feet wide, are they? No. So, this, you had previously a 40-foot width or 50-foot width on access to be able to access to put sand in that area. And of course, Cocoa Beach, this is, you know, a major tourist location. I mean, this is the priority for sand for the county, and yet, do you know, under your sand re-nourishment permits with the federal government, that these trucks can't stay on the beach at night? They have to come up? They can't stay on the beach. So, where are you gonna put them? If you're gonna narrow that to a little narrow pathway, where are you putting the trucks? Have you guys really thought this out? I don't think so.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Goodson?
Sandra, can you step back a bit? Can you tell me, ma'am, what kind of trucks you're talking about?
For sand re-nourishment? They had four articulating, big sand trucks. They had diggers to put the sand...
Those are excavators.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's great.
Have you ever seen an excavator go down the road?
Oh, yeah. They go on a flatbed.
Correct.
Right.
And the road's 12-foot wide, excavators eight, transports eight, off-road trucks are eight. So, if you have a 20-foot easement, where is this gonna restrict us getting in there?
It's not restricting you getting in there. It's how you store them when they come off the beach at night.
Well, you wouldn't bring an excavator off the beach at night, ma'am. You'd pull it up on the tunes for it to be there the next day. Off-road trucks, the same way.
Except you have to have room to put them. You're gonna put them in line, down a row?
Well, yeah. You would put them down the beach in lines.
Oh, yeah. You know...
But I'm just curious, because you...
There's common sense. I mean...
Common sense is you don't move that equipment every night. That's common sense.
No. I'm sorry. Your federal permit requires it. That's just the legality of it.
No, you stack... Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Chair.
Absolutely. Okay. There's a motion on the floor with a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Consent agenda carries. All right. Going to public comments on G, public hearing. Let's go to Louie Hannah.
Good afternoon, Louie.
Good afternoon, man, lady. I'm Louie Hannah, and I've lived on East Christopherly Road for 28 years, retired after 30 years at the Space Center. I'm an Army veteran, and I have a problem with the speed bumps on East Christopherly Road. We heard about the soon-to-be-installed speed bumps just a couple of weeks before they were to be installed, and that was a done deal. They were coming, deal with it. It kind of felt like we weren't supposed to know about it beforehand, before... We weren't supposed to know about it until it was too late to do anything about it. Upon inquiring about why no one knew about the speed bumps prior, I was told that the only ones affected are the ones who voted for it. The address is within a half... The first half-mile from Courtney to Judson. We, the residents east of Judson to the end of East Christopherly and all the connecting streets, were unaffected because we were unaffected. No, not one person east of Judson on Christopherly or its tributaries had a vote for any say in the matter at all. They were just gonna be put in, and that was it, unaffected, seriously. This is my home we're talking about here. My commissioner, Mr. Goodson, told me that we could use Judson Road, thereby eliminating the necessity to drive over the speed bumps altogether. Judson's a dirt road. In the dry season, it's dusty. It's a washboard road. In the wet season, it's a mud road. If we, the residents of East Christopherly, wanted to traverse a dirt road on a daily basis, we could have bought cheaper property on a dirt road. To my way of thinking, when something is arbitrarily taken away, what is offered in return should be equal to or better than what we lost. Pave Judson. And why punish everyone for the sins of the few? Catch the guys who are speeding. Put cops out there. Name on the document authorizing the installation of speed bumps is the same name that appeared on at least one of the company trucks on the job site the day of the installation. Who provided the asphalt? Is this a conflict of interest? Just asking. At the very least, it's what we'd call bad optics in today's world. The resident who initiated this process was overheard boasting at the local convenience store about how he had gotten traffic slowed down on East Christopherly, that he had pulled some strings with a buddy at the county to get the speed bumps installed, but he was unable to get them installed past Judson. I thought my county commissioner's job was to help the citizens he represents to make life better. This is not better. This is insulting and divisive. East Christopherly Road has been my home for over 28 years. To be told I'm unaffected...
Your time is up, sir.
Well, don't tell me I'm unaffected. I am very much affected. We're all affected.
Commissioner Goodson, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do. First of all, this was voted on with Commissioner Lober. 85% in the county code, Frank, correct me if I'm wrong, county code says 85% right now that are front the property of the speed bumps go, correct? Mark, maybe it's your question.
Commissioner, there's a BCC that governs that, and we petitioned... We sent out the petition, and it was sent out, and it met the threshold...
Of the people that... But is it true that the people that are voting now, unless you change the ordinance, were people that live on Christopherly Road, that front the Christopherly Road?
Correct.
Not the people that live a block off or a mile off on another street, correct?
That is correct.
And these were approved by Lober, correct?
I don't know offhand. I wasn't prepared to answer that tonight.
Okay. So, therefore, if we're going to allow Mr. Dudley here, you know, if you... We'd have to change the code, correct?
It's a BCC. It's not a code.
What is a... All right. Tell him what a BCC is.
It's a board policy.
Okay. So, we'd have to change it, right?
Correct.
Okay. Now, and if I'm not mistaken, the people that are east of you have already voted to...
No, they didn't.
Okay. You say they didn't, but I was under the impression they voted to for when they paved the road, they want speed bumps. Okay, you're saying no? Okay. I agree with all of y'all. You're right.
Okay, sir. Sir, thank you very much, but until your turn's called, you'll have to come on up. So, I appreciate you just sitting there and... No, sir. Please.
That's all right.
Please. I'm asking you very nicely, please, just wait till your turn. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Chair.
Terrence White.
Mr. Terrence White, I live at 5595 Joseph Court. It's a road off of East Christopherly. Okay? Mr. Hannah covered a lot of the points I had on here, but in doing some research, a lot of the problems with speed bumps, people haven't even discussed. They slow down the response of emergency vehicles. Being a former firefighter, I know what it's like to go over bumps in a big fire truck and that, and also including transporting someone out in an ambulance after the fact. The ambulance can't leave the area in a hurry because of the humps. One of the things that I witnessed for years in areas that do have speed bumps is when a school bus goes over there, the children in the backseat gets launched almost to the ceiling of the school bus. Sometime, follow a school bus in a neighborhood that has speed bumps and that. But along with Mr. Hannah, no one east of Judson was questioned about the speed bumps. I didn't find out about them until I came down the road, and they were in the process of installing them, okay? It causes excess wear on vehicles. One of the issues I see, too, is we have people down there that have livestock, horses, goats, cattle, and that, and they play heck going over those bumps with animals in a trailer. A lot of animals are spooky in a trailer anyway, so that plays heck on them, too, and it also plays on the suspension of the trailers. And then, while I'm up here, too, I would also like to request the speed bumps on Joseph Court to be removed. There are 15 residents on that street. 14 of them told me they want them removed. And in doing research on the ones on East Christopherly, I found a thing in the county that says you cannot install speed bumps on a dead-end road. Joseph Court is a dead-end road. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. Robert Adams.
Yes, sir. My name's Robert Adams. I've lived on Christopherly Road for 40 years, and I'm here to make a citizen's request, which I was told to do, for a petition to remove the speed bumps. Whatever that package is, that's what we're trying to get a hold of, and that's why we're here speaking. Five speed bumps have been installed in less than a half a mile from Courtney to Judson. Christopherly Road's only two miles long with a bunch of other roads on it. According to county policy, the benefited areas and the affected areas are the ones that are supposed to be checked out before you put your speed bumps in. Everybody on that road uses Christopherly every single day. Every time I leave my house, if I leave my house twice, I go over 20 speed bumps. I would love you to put 20 speed bumps around your house and see how much you enjoy it. Other than that, we were told by the Commissioner Goodman to drive down Judson. That's not what I moved out there for 40 years ago. I moved out to get away from HOA, and they finally found me. I don't appreciate it. The detrimental effects, you know, whatever you want to say. And when it comes to the logistics of it, how many of the affected homeowners signed off on a petition to use their tax money to put in those speed bumps? I didn't. I've never been asking 40 years whether I want a speed bump. Detrimental effects, community's torn apart. We used to be friendly people, waving at each other, people stopping to look at your Christmas lights. Now, they flip you off every time you go by the house on the corner. Not too hard to figure out. It's not really that much of a bring-it-together package. So, property values are impacted, school buses, damage to my cars. I'm not taking my trailers with $1,000 worth of equipment over five speed bumps just to leave my home every day. Not the way to do business. Why would the unnotified homeowners possibly have to use our personal funds to remove those speed bumps, which is in your package deal? So, finally, think about it. Do you want to drive over five speed bumps every time you leave your house? Five in, five out. Thank you very much. I appreciate the living daylights out of your time.
Question, sir. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Now, if you want to remove the speed bumps, and you ran a survey of all the people that live on Christopherly and off of Christopherly...
Yes, sir.
Would you agree if they voted for speed bumps?
Nope. I've got 100 and some odd signatures here already.
No, hang on. Hang on.
That don't want anything.
Hang on. Let me finish your question, okay?
All right.
Because the first people that voted that lived on Christopherly, only one said no. Everybody else said speed bumps.
Fine.
I see you shaking your head, but I'll send... If you'll give my staff your email, I'll send it to you. But anyway, going back to the question I got for you...
Yes, sir.
If you ran a survey, and everybody that lived off of Christopherly and owned Christopherly...
Yes, sir.
Said they don't want speed bumps, or if they wanted or didn't want, would you agree with the vote at the end?
Yes, sir. Very much so.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
I mean, that's logical. I mean, but...
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Alan Miles.
I'm Dr. Alan Miles, 301 Lisa Road Northeast, Palm Bay, 32907. My question is, why is there no urgency to put a traffic light at the intersection between Vera High and the new middle school? There are veterans leaving the VA clinic, seniors from Sonata East, and a wet surface from the car wash. There are high school students making U-turns, golf carts, and walkers all diverging on this intersection. It is slated for a light beginning the 2025 school year, I believe. If safety is a main concern of the commission, then let's get a light. Temporary ones in the Palm Bay Heritage High School are being installed. I have some information on this system. Does anybody know what's going on with the traffic lights there?
Sir, the public comment section is for you to go ahead and give us your public comment. It's not a question-and-answer situation. Commissioner Felter, do you have something you'd like to talk about?
Out of respect for my constituent... Mark, can you speak for the light project that's happening out there? I know we have many conversations with the schools about it.
Yes, Commissioner. The school district is actively designing this light, and we are a contributor to it. I don't have the actual design schedule at my disposal, but they are planning to put it in sometime later this year, and we anticipate by the end of the year, I would say, to have that put in. But it is something that we anticipate them putting in later this year.
Okay. It still doesn't meet the safety qualification of being installed before the school year.
Okay. We're not gonna get into a question-and-answer service. Commissioner asked Mark for a response. He gave it to you. Commissioner Felter, do you have anything more?
I would say, too, sir, everyone's actively working on it. Please believe me. And also, Vera Elementary. That's something I inherited, and I've been working on that since I got here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, sir. All right. Let's go to H1. Now, Commissioner Felter, you have a card? Okay. Richard Bitner. Good afternoon, Richard.
I live at 468 Newfound Harbor. This thing is absolutely a monstrosity. I have pictures to show you the scope and size of this thing. Is this thing on? Okay. You can see there, that's me standing along, and that structure is huge. It's almost as big as the house. That's a side view. That is the whole thing on my side. Am I going too fast on these pictures? No, no. That's your phone, sir. Then, also, there's safety issues on this, too. There's rot where you can see the roof is collapsing there. You see right here, that's collapsing. And there's absolutely no privacy. When they're standing on their deck, this is what I have to look at. You see how she's standing there? I want privacy in my yard. Every single time they step on their thing, that's what I have to look at. I have to look at them. It's just too big. It's the size of their house. It doesn't pass zoning. They've already said it's against policy, you know? Here we are wasting your time when it should have been tore down already a year ago. We've been at this for a year. I just want my privacy. Okay? I mean, they're up there two feet. I have to look two feet of their bodies every time they step on top of that structure. The thing is like 50 feet long. It's terrible. It's just too big. It needs to come down, or modified, or something. But it's not fine going out in my yard swimming, and I have to look at them. That's really all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Tobias, you have questions? No? Anybody have any questions, sir? Tom?
How long have you lived there, next door?
I have five years.
Five years.
And undoubtedly, this has only been a problem for the last year?
Well...
You said for the last year.
There's been other issues, but the subject really is on the structure. But we have gone to court. We had a privacy fence that was eight feet tall that was removed. It was on our property. They had it removed and put a new fence, a six-foot print, that white fence that you saw. They put it on their property. So, they took away two feet of our privacy. We tried talking to them, and it was her way and only her way. It didn't matter what we had to think.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Is there any questions from the commission? Do I hear a motion? Mark, did you want to comment on this at all?
So, it is a public petition to vacate public utility and drainage easement. So, the request is to vacate the two public utility and drainage easements to allow for the existing covered deck to remain and become compliant with the code enforcement case. And so, the petitioner is requesting for five-foot vacate on both the north and west side, and that is at the discretion of the Board to honor that or... that is at the discretion of the board to honor that or not, and if so, then the petitioner would then go before the Board of Adjustment to seek a variance.
Is this Commissioner Goodson's district?
Yes.
Commissioner, do you have any recommendations in regards to this?
I'd just like to make a motion for approval, please.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve, is there a second? There's a second by Commissioner Tobias, any more discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Okay, H2, approval of revisions to ordinance number 9837, also known as Chapter 2, Article 7 of the Brevard County Code of Ordinances entitled Construction and Improvement of Public Buildings. Kathy, are you on this one?
Yes.
Take it away.
It's requested that the Board approve the revisions to Chapter 2, Article 7, Brevard County Code of Ordinances, Construction and Improvement to Public Buildings.
Any questions? I, just quickly, I listened to this during the briefing, and I was extremely pleased myself. Anybody got a motion?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, to approve proposed revision to Chapter 2, Article 7 of our County Code of Ordinances entitled Construction and Improvement to Public Buildings.
All right, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Tobias, is there a second?
Second.
Sorry. There's Commissioner Pritchett, seconds. Any more discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. H3, approval of revisions to Board Policy, BCC 28, prequalifications of construction bidders prior to award. Kathy, take it away.
Yes, Commissioners, this requires the acceptance of public comment on the revisions to Board Policy, BCC 26, prequalifications of construction bidders prior to award. Do we have any public comments?
There's no public cards, there's no cards in regards to this. Any questions from the, did you have something more, Kathy? Okay, any ques, is that on this?
Motion to approve.
Hold on, please, I apologize, okay? Thank you. All right, there's a motion approved by Commissioner Tobias.
Revisions to Board Policy, BCC 28, prequalification of construction bidders prior to award.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Commissioner Tobias makes a motion, Commissioner Goodson seconds. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Okay, moving right along here, unfinished business. Board discussion direction regarding negotiations with the City of Melbourne concerning Sarno Road landfill property. County Manager Abate, is this yours?
Yes, myself and the county attorney, we've given you some items so that we could get some board direction. After discussions with the city, they were not interested in the purchase of the property. However, there were questions about whether or not the board might be interested in leasing portion of it and/or selling a portion or leasing a portion of it to, for purposes of affordable housing. And the third area was whether or not you wanted to sell a portion of that land for, to the city at some point in the future. So, you would see that outlined in the agenda item. You can do that either say yes, you're interested in any of those three items, or indicate that you'd be interested in it if it was a package. Either way, we're looking for further board direction. And if the board would choose not to do any of those things, then we did put a second item, which was, would you be interested in light of what happened in prior board discussions and use of Wickham Park for Renaissance Fair, whether or not you were interested in us trying to reach out to Renaissance Fair for a short-term lease, a year or less, for them to use for Renaissance Fair this coming year? And then the third option would be any other direction the board might have for us. I did receive an email from the city manager right before the meeting indicating that what she read in the agenda was consistent with our discussions.
Thank you very much, County Manager. Sandra Sullivan.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. I agree that we already said about the mock charging.
This is going to cost taxpayers hundreds of millions of dollars. This site has been not only used for DMAA site, it has also been used and is required fifteen acres for hurricane debris. And you can see in the aerial here how much of the site was used before. The math doesn't work, you're only leaving eight right now. I'd like to say that there's no appraisal in the agenda item, there should have been a couple appraisals. I'd like to say that, it says on here, on the agenda item, whether allowing more time to reach an agreement, a long-term on a, wait a second here. City inquired whether the board might be willing to consider a long-term lease of the site with a relatively nominal value. That is not allowed, I gave you a legal opinion from previously. I also want to comment on, it was very clear from the meeting that they don't want to pay for the land, and only Alfred was pushing, and where he said, making points that they can lease Sarno for a dollar a year for ninety-nine years, saying the county really wants to get rid of it, and the county doesn't need the Sarno land. We absolutely do. And then I just want to say, the optics of this are not good, okay? So, there was a hit piece that dropped this week, and you dig into how, who is the PAC that funded that, and you find out it's the entity across the road. And it's very common knowledge in Brevard County that he didn't want the affordable housing across the street on that property. So, is this trade for a three-acre piece of property for a fifty-seven-acre piece of property? Is this, just the optics don't look good on this at all. And as well, when this first came up, a campaign contribution to a county commissioner. This is, this is not good for we, the people. You're not following your own rules on appraisals, from as far as I can see, you have one appraisal, and you can't discuss leasing land for a dollar a year for ninety-nine years? This is utility land, this was purchased with bonds. There are rules, there are state statutes. This stinks. It just has really, really bad optics. And usually, in the past, things would have a tendency, when you bring them before this board and you bring them up, they would tend to go away once you've exposed it. I don't get this board. It just seems like, even with things that are brought forward, there's no shame anymore. There's no shame for the people, whether it's, the people, the will of the people on what they want, you know, like the other gentleman up here? I'd hate to live next door to that structure.
Well, okay, Jeffrey, is it Noos?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners, I'm Jeffrey Noos, the Executive Director of Daily Bread, and I'm grateful to just very simply express our openness to the possibilities that have been put forward in the negotiations. We're what you might call an indirect party to the negotiations, and there, I want to provide a little bit of clarity that we would be open to the possibility of a long-term lease as well. We're indifferent to whether the property is owned or leased by us, and grateful for the county to step in and address this countywide challenge of the problem of affordable housing, and grateful for the, looking for kind of creative solutions to this need. I'm available for any questions, if there are any. Thank you.
All right. Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Pritchett.
Nothing on line of that, but I want to thank you for all you do. You have a great mission, and you really impact a lot of people, and I just want you to know, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, Commissioner Felton, you have anything you'd like to say in regards to this?
So, I would, if you're looking for a motion, Mr. Chair, I would be interested in Perrin 1, which would be to lease directly to Renaissance Fair for the next season, and then any other thing that happens with this parcel is something that maybe even the next board can discuss in the future. That'd be my motion.
Is there a second?
He's got one last.
I know, I just was, that's all right. Will you take the chair for a minute?
Certainly, sir.
I will second that motion. Commissioner Tobias, you have something you'd like to say, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this came out of my office, and just a little background, I want to thank the county manager on this, as well as the county attorney, they worked very diligently on this. I had had some discussions with the mayor of Melbourne. Clearly, the mayor of Melbourne was observing sunshine because he had no idea where his board was going to go. I did the same, I have no idea where this board was going to go. But what the county manager did with the instruction of this board was go out and get an appraisal of that land. It came back at far more than what I would have expected. And then so did Melbourne, they went out and got an appraisal, and theirs came back even higher than our appraisal. So, then the offer was made for an exchange for road maintenance, so they could amortize this cost over twenty years. Clearly, the other elected officials in Melbourne were not too intrigued with that plan, and that is a-okay. And I fully support that decision. There were a bunch of other decision points in there about parcelling up this land. I would support the way the motion and the second are going on that, but I think we need to close the door on parcelling this off. I think, you know, I don't know what sections of that fifty-seven acres they'd want, the sections that we may use, the dry sections or anything like that. So if we were going to go in an exchange for some road maintenance and the whole parcel was being dealt, that would be okay. But as far as parcelling it up, I don't think there's any more need for staff to continue negotiations based on what we've received back. I would not be in favor of a long-term lease with the City of Melbourne for, you know, a dollar or a thousand dollars, I just don't think that that would benefit us in any nature. So, again, I would support that motion as well as the second, as long as we put some sort of termination on, clearly, we're not going to meet, and that is a-okay with the City of Melbourne on what they're looking for. This is just a creative way to, Commissioner Felton just has a creative way to help out some live LARPers out there, play in some costumes, and I certainly would support that, as long as there were some clear provisions in there with that lease. Obviously, the Parks Director, I'm sure, would put in play that just costs, certain cleanup be done, a market rate be done. This is the City of Melbourne, so it'd be very, we need to be very, very, very clear that, you know, entrance and exit and, you know, all that stuff is outside, this is not county land, the, sorry, the entrance is not county land, that all needs to be handled and permitted through the City of Melbourne. So we can offer the lease, but we certainly can't guarantee anything, what's going on. So, I know that's a lot said, but I would like added in the motion, and this may not, I would hope this would be friendly, that we would not go any further with negotiations with the City of Melbourne, because we're just too far apart, they're not interested in that type of deal, as well as the provisions with the, whatever, the Renaissance Fair that we set just costs and all that nonsense.
Well, sir, I would, Mr. Chair, I would accept that as a friendly amendment, if you want to restate that for the purpose of making it clear for the clerk and for the motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the amendment would be to terminate negotiations with the City of Melbourne and to require the, Mr. Chair, would you want the agreement, I don't think we need the agreement to come back to the board, I think we can trust the...
I think if you, if we, sir, if you don't mind, what if the same rate that they paid for last year, they, at Wickham Park, they pay for this next season coming at the Sarno property? Would that...
Can I pump that over to management?
Yeah, I would say you're looking at the cost that, that was the all-in cost in terms of what they paid for the permit. They also had a variety of camping that was going on, RVs, et cetera, that they did, so we have an all-in cost for that. And in the current motion, as well as in the agenda item, all ancillary costs, cleanup, et cetera, would also be included in whatever would be termed, so it would be under the same terms for the period of time that we collected the revenues from the Wickham Park situation, and then the ancillary costs as well.
Okay, so the additions are number one, to terminate negotiations with the City of Melbourne, and number two, use the provisions in the staff report to have a similar fee schedule as last year for the Renaissance Fair. Hopefully, that would be a friendly amendment.
Okay, on, you want to go further on that, or you want to...
I accept all that as a friendly amendment to my motion.
Okay, Commissioner Pritchett, did you have something you wanted to say?
I did, real quickly, okay, so, since this is a different area for them, I'm sure they're going to have to do some clearing and setting up, is that going to be on their dime as well?
My understanding of any kind of site work prep would be up to them.
He said a word I didn't know, so I just thought I would double check.
Right, that would be included, the work prep, that would be whatever costs would be on Renaissance Fair.
And all that would be included in the lease. So, I mean, all of the things that we're concerned about would be included in the lease.
As a cost paid by the person who's leasing it, right?
Yes, Commissioner Pritchett, did you have something else? Okay.
Is this one, one-year, one-year lease?
That's what it says in the packet, yes, sir, one year.
Okay, all right, any more discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Renaissance Fair is back in Wickham Park, bet you they'll be happy. Sarno, oh, Sarno, 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 excuse me, my brain's, I'm losing it there. Okay, I would be in trouble there. Okay, now, we are on public comments? No, oh, J1. Okay, J1, approval of contract with Keep Brevard Beautiful for State Road 406, Max Borough Causeway, State Road 528, Beach Line Causeway, State Road 518, O'Gally Causeway, Highway 192, and State Road 404, Causeway Cleanup. Are you handling this one, young man?
Yes, sir. You handled it well for me.
Hold on, please.
I have a request to make, Mr. Chair, items J1 and 2 are very closely related, so I was going to ask if we could discuss them both together, and then both items, contracts working in collaboration with Keep Brevard Beautiful. I think we should have one contract with KBB on all the projects, rather than having Cocoa Beach as the middleman for State Road 520 Causeway and the beach cleanup project. Item J1 has the Max Borough Causeway in the Titusville area, the 192 Causeway in Melbourne, the beach line, and it just makes sense to kind of put them all together instead of just separating out 520. So I would make a motion at this time, or as soon as we're ready after a discussion, to approve and authorize the Tourism Director to sign a three-year contract with a two-year extension with KBB, beginning October 1st, 2024, for the six Causeway projects plus the beach cleanup for the annual amount added together of four hundred seventeen thousand one eighty-four per year, subject to the county attorney risk management and purchase servicing approval. The funds for State Road 520 Causeway and beach cleanup would come from the tourist beach fund under the Sections 102-1193B and 4A of the County Code, and the funds for the five other Causeway projects will still come from the lagoon portion of the beach fund under Section 102-1194 of the Code. And then adopt the legislative findings at that time for the requested action for these. So that's just an idea, to put them both together, and I think it would serve KBB, and then we would be able to take Cocoa Beach out of that as the middleman, it would just get all the projects done.
Well, that certainly is going to put a spoke in the, stick in the wheels here. I'd have to find out whether or not Cocoa Beach and Keep Brevard Beautiful would be interested in doing that. In the interest of saving time, Wayne, do you have a problem with that?
Wayne Caragino, City Manager, Cocoa Beach, not at all, not at all. It makes sense, actually, to be honest with you.
All right, great, that's good news. All right, one down, one to go. Keep Brevard Beautiful, John, do you have a problem with this?
John Nico, Keep Brevard Beautiful, no sir.
John Nico, Keeper of Vard Beautiful, no, sir, I don't. I think this would be a good idea.
OK. Good. We'll go sit back down. Let's see what the, Sandra Sullivan, I know you're chomping at the bit to talk, so come on up. I got it.
So, Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. I just want to give a shout out. When I drive down, almost every single week, Waterway Warriors is out cleaning up Pineta Causeway. It is so impressive, their, their volunteers. This is just one of their posts on social media. And I don't know why we're not, and they're doing other causeways, they're doing other areas, they're doing other roads. They've put receptacles all along the causeways. So when people go fishing or they're recreating at the side of the causeway, they're putting their trash in there. These people work so hard. It is so impressive. And so I look at, we're giving 30, almost $37,000 to KBB. It doesn't clean up Pineta Causeway. Waterway Warriors does. And, and the work that they've been doing, OK, they've been working with natural resources. Natural resources know what they're doing. They're, they're going down into the lagoon, they're picking up stuff out of the lagoon, engine blocks. I mean, you wouldn't believe the stuff that they pick up. And there's no consideration here for, for this group, Waterway Warriors, that have been for, I don't know, two years now, cleaning up that, that Pineta Causeway on a weekly basis. Just drive down there sometime, you'll see all of these bags of trash at the side of the road with their volunteer sign. And posted on the road, look, it says right here, "Adopt a highway, Pineta Waterway Warriors." What are we doing here? We're not acknowledging people who work really hard, volunteers that are out there every weekend picking up trash?
Could I say something real quick, Mr. Chair?
Oh, please do.
This board adopted a resolution in recognition of the Waterway Warriors. Sharon Knowles is here tonight, and, you know, I think they're an amazing group that goes out there and cleans up. They called me on a Saturday morning and we got road and bridge out there and we picked up the remains of what must have been a dock that was set up there for a bonfire. We removed every splinter of that with their group. And they even went back out there with a magnet and picked all the nails up. So please believe me when I tell you, they're, they're an amazing group and we appreciate it. And Sharon, just from there, or if you want to speak, you're in support of what we're doing here tonight with the contracts? Please.
OK.
She'll do a card, she'll do a card.
Hold on. Now, you can either come up and speak or let this go because I think this is going the right direction. That's up to you. So do you want to speak?
I would love to speak.
OK, come on up.
First off, thank you for the opportunity. Sandra, we've, we absolutely appreciate those words. And we are in absolute and complete support of the agreement with KBB moving forward. We are looking forward to a collaboration with them, however that's going to look. And we could not be any more in support.
OK, very good. Thank you so much.
Ma'am, thank you for all you do. I just wanted to say that real quick. Thank you.
All right, John Nico, is it? Did you have, do you want to have any comments or are you OK? As I said earlier, I think this is going everybody's direction. So if I were you, I would sit still and just let the board take action. OK, good. All right, now, Commissioner Pritchett, would you please give us a, another motion, please, that we could, everybody could hear in the court?
I'm going to give this to you guys at the clerk. Is that good? All right. So the motion is to approve and authorize the tourist director to sign a three-year contract with a two-year extension with KBB beginning October 1, 2024, for the six causeway projects plus the beach cleanup for a total annual amount of $417,184 per year, subject to the county attorney risk management and purchasing services approval. With the funds for the 520 Causeway and beach cleanup coming from the tourist beach fund under sections 102-1193B and 4A of the county code, the funds for the other five causeway projects will come from the, from the lagoon portion of the beach fund under section 102-1194A of the code. Adopt the legislative findings set forth with the requested action for the items that are listed in J1 and J2 and authorize the county manager to execute any necessary budget change request.
Is there a second to the motion? OK, a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, seconded by Commissioner Felton. Any more discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Tobia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And first of all, I like the first two provisions in here. In fact, I had one of them but only on one section. So I think it's wise that we combine these two. I also think it's wise that they're run through the county for an administrative cost. My issue, though, is with, unfortunately, with the numbers, they just really don't add up very well. And here's where I got it. So I want to look at, bifurcate these really quickly here. There's an increased cost to the causeways of roughly $36,000 and change. However, their, the scope is expanded to add an additional causeway. And so that, that justifies the better part, if not all, of the initial cost. So I have no concerns with the added expenditures for the causeway portion of that. So just want to be very clear, no concerns there. But I do want to go to the other section here. We're looking at increase, an increase of roughly $85,000 or 49%. That is to go from an expenditure of $175,000 to $260,000. So again, that is 49%. They justified that with three things. An increase in tourism, they said, an increase in fuel costs, and an increase in material costs. So the scope isn't expanding. These are the three added costs. Unfortunately, none of those justify a four, or even get close to justifying a 49% increase. So I did look up these because when you come and ask for more money, I think it's very fair to have some baseline. So I looked over the, the period of time since the last contract. And we've seen, using the data from fiscal year 2022 to fiscal year 2024, we have seen roughly a, good job, Peter, a 12% increase in TDT collection. But when you drill down a little bit more, we've actually seen about 11% increase in Cocoa Beach. So again, 11%, nowhere near that 49%. Then we get to fuel costs. Fuel costs over the five years, according to the U.S. Department of Transportation, have gone up 35%. And I do understand 35% is close to 49%. But I was informed walking in that that only counts for 10% to 15% of their budget. And finally, materials. There's no justification of what materials, we were not presented with any justification of what those materials are. So I don't, I have no problem with a 49% increase as long as we could justify why we're providing 49% increase. I would be more than willing to provide a 3% increase per year over those five, but that doesn't get anywhere near that $85,000. In fact, it would be about $57,000 less than what is collected here. And I would be willing, again, to vote for that 49%. But again, there is no justification. Tourism is up, but it's not up 49%. Fuel is up, but it's not up 49%. And they've given us no justification of 49, of what materials they needed. They did the job at 175. I don't know why we need to arbitrarily offer a 49% increase. I think that that would be irresponsible of us to go, excuse me, to go ahead and provide that level of increase. So...
Are you finished, sir? You have something else?
I was just asking for this number.
OK.
So, you know, if you did the 3%, if you did the 3% increase, that would be $57,126 less than what they're asking for, so...
OK, will you take the chair, Commissioner Pritchett, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. And I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Tobia. And I think what's happened here is that these good people have been working shorthanded in using volunteers that supplement what they've been doing, and they have been getting underpaid to be able to do the work that they need to do. I am perfectly comfortable with their, their proposal. And I would absolutely, unequivocally, without any, any question, support it. I understand your, your opinion in regards to it. I don't have the same opinion. So hopefully, we can come to some sort of understanding on this and move forward.
Would it be possible to get the gentleman from KBB to come up and maybe if he's got any exclamations of, explanations of what it would be?
That's up to you. You've got the chair.
Oh, I was asking, you have the chair.
Oh, yeah, OK.
Usually talking to just...
Right.
If it's permissible, I'll take that question. I'm Deb Harmon. I live in Indian Harbor Beach and I'm the board, board chair for Keeper of Vard Beautiful. I understand Commissioner Tobia is concerned. And I want to explain how we arrived at these numbers. He's asking for a percent increase. It's near impossible for us to get to a percent increase that I can make sense and defend. And John will tell you that when he showed me the numbers and the estimate that we put together for Peter for both contracts, I said, "What? Based on what?" And we dug in and we analyzed our costs for the last two years and have a, have given a pretty detailed cost estimate for what it's costing us now and what we can foresee next year. So just to clarify one thing, on the beach contract, we were actually, before the Pineta entered in there, and we were asked to do that and are grateful for the Waterway Warriors and what they're, what we're going to do together. But on the beach contract, we were originally paid $60,000 back in 2019. And in 2022, I believe, we were given an extension of $40,000 for that one year to, to take care of the additional trash from the people coming back to the beach during the pandemic for one year. We are asking for $120. That expired at the end of your fiscal year 2022, I believe, maybe '23. So we, we were compensated $100,000. The trash did not go away. We did not cut our level of service. We have analyzed our costs and said it's going to cost 120. And if you look at the number for Pineta added, they're roughly similar numbers. The causeway, if you remember to what's in your packet, the level of effort on each causeway varies. So there's some variation by causeway. As far as the beach contract is concerned, I can't defend why it was increased. I think the number was artificially low and I don't know why, based on what was negotiated years ago. So I can tell you what's in that number. And we would, we're happy to disclose how we arrived at the $26,000 for materials, which includes fuel, it includes supplies like bags, which the big bags that we use at the beach are quite expensive. It includes personal protective equipment because we do have people out on the causeways doing fairly dangerous things on 520 as part of the beach contract. I can give you the breakdown. It's roughly $236,000 just for the beach and another roughly $24,000 to $25,000 for the causeway at the 520 Causeway. All of these contracts are based on the same labor rates that we have now, the same general costs for our allocations for insurance, our vehicle insurance every year for all of our vehicles is roughly $53,000. It was $53,000 last year. I don't know that any of that was included originally. When I look at the numbers now versus then, it's very hard to get to that. But I can tell you, we are happy to sit and disclose. We went over these numbers and the backup for these numbers with our treasurer, who's been our treasurer for 30 years, just this morning. So I can't speak to the increase because I wasn't here when the original number was created. But I do thank you, Commissioner Steele, for pointing out that on top of what we get paid for, we bring a lot of volunteer activity. And we haven't stopped, even though our funding has not been adequate for the last couple of years. And we're just asking, moving forward, to be paid for the value that we're giving for the paid work. And we'll continue to work hard to supplement that. I'll just say, I come from the business world. And I come from a world where we competed for government contracts at all levels. And I understand you've got a fiscal responsibility. I have a fiscal responsibility as a citizen. I want to see you use our funds well. But I also have an obligation for stewardship to make sure that our organization is sustainable because of the work we do.
Thank you, Deb. Commissioner Tobia, did you have something else?
Just one quick question, Deb. Yeah, sorry. Thank you for, I don't come from, I'm a public school teacher, so I don't. But you did say something, and help me, so in your business, you said, your words, not mine, "I can't defend the increase."
I can't, I can't explain. I can, we know what our costs are.
That's exactly what you said, I wrote it down. "I can't defend the increase." So if someone came to you, you know, a contractor came to you and they were asking for, I don't know, a 50% increase, and you ask, "Why are you asking for a 50% increase?" And they said, "I can't defend the increase." Would you provide them with that increase?
Well, what...
These are your words, "I can't defend the increase."
I understand. But let me say it a different way. I, I cannot, all I can do is, is explain the costs that we have today and how it compares to what we've been paid for the last two years.
But you just said the treasurer was there for 30 years, did you not?
That's true.
I'm listening to you and it's just not adding up.
That's true. And he can't answer it for me either.
OK, so why, so if your treasurer can't answer it, who's been there 30 years, if you can't, why do you expect this board to arbitrarily hand you 49% more? Again, you can't explain it, your treasurer can't explain it, but you expect us to hand over 49% more?
For all I know, in, in 2019, it was a grant and it was not intended to cover our full costs. I don't know. That's what I mean.
That's fine, I appreciate your honesty. I really do.
I don't know.
I appreciate your honesty.
But I can tell you, we're happy to sit and disclose the costs that we have today and let you review them in detail.
Ma'am.
Let your financial people tell us whether or not there, there are things that are not allowable.
You've done very well and you were, you were extremely honest and I really, I do appreciate that, ma'am. Absolutely, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Felton, did you have something that you wanted to add to this?
I'll just ask a question of Peter. This went through TDC. Were, were there any concerns over the cost of the, at that time, two contracts? In the aggregate, was, was there any concern about that?
There were questions that the TDC asked, but they felt, I think, satisfied after, after getting the answers and it was unanimous vote.
OK. Commissioner Pritchett, do you have something to say?
Yeah, just, Commissioner Goodson, this is kind of in your, your area. So I wouldn't mind if you kind of chimed in with, with your thoughts, sir.
Well...
You have two, two options here, in my opinion. You can table this and then bring back everything that Commissioner Tobia wants to look at. Or you can vote today because I'm in agreement. They do a wonderful job. TDC says that everybody voted unanimously for it, so I'm on board with them.
OK. Do I hear a motion?
I made a motion.
You made a motion to approve it? OK, it's been seconded by Commissioner Felton.
I will second it.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion carries. OK. We're through with J1 and J2. Now we're going to miscellaneous, proposed amendment to Revard County Home Rule Charter to align the school board residents to the county commission district. I believe this is yours, Commissioner Tobia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to go over a little bit of the history and of what's happened here. May 2023, the Board of County Commissioners, the redistricting, the, the school board voluntarily voted to align their district boundaries with the commission districts so that we share the same boundaries as the county commission. This was one of the things that I wanted to do when I got elected. I thought that there were five county commission districts or five school board districts. It should make sense that they were aligned accordingly. Let me tell you why I think this was a good idea. It lowers costs to taxpayers, it reduces confusion to voters, and it eliminates redundancies. Following this vote by the school board, I suggested at the July 11, 2023 meeting that we look into potentially a charter amendment to ensure that the two entities, districts, continue to align in the future. Why do this? Because dictating the boundaries remain cohesive will save reoccurring estimated of approximately $30,500 every 10 years. So $17,000 in legal fees, $13,000 in GIS. fees, $13,000 in GIS licensing will also save an estimated, this is pretty important, 250 hours in county staff time alone. The school board would bear its own cost. Next time redistricting comes around, the county and the school board would have an equal number of appointees on the new redistricting committee. To get this on the 2024 ballot, the language must be submitted to the supervisor, supervisor by August 19, 2024. Seeing this is a charter amendment, there would be a super majority, so we would need obviously four of us. It also requires review by a three attorney panel to ensure, quote, "It embraces only one subject and is consistent with the Florida Constitution, the general law, and the charter." The attached resolution includes a clause that the language will not be, sorry, will not be submitted to the SOE unless, and until it's approved by at least two members of said panel. If the panel is not able to complete the review, the amendment in time for the 2024 deadline, it would be submitted in the 2026 ballot measure. Now, this is pretty important here, that this does not take authority away from the school board. When the five county commission districts are redrawn, the five school board members areas would also be redrawn in conjunction. However, this is the big one, the proposed charter amendment provides for the following, redistricting, the school board will still retain the authority under Florida Statute 1001.32, Section 2. They may make any changes that it deem necessary should they not see fit. So in other words, what this would do is make the default of us working together. If the school board didn't like that, they would have the ability to override. But it makes no sense that we invest time, money, drawing lines, and the school board does the same thing under the same parameters. So this would potentially put it on the ballot in 20, 20, 2024, and if we can't meet the deadlines, put it on 2026. I'm open to ask, I'm open to answer any questions on positives, negatives, suggestions, any, any of that good stuff. I'm very, very, very happy that the school board voluntarily joined us. So if you're in County Commission District 2, you're also in School District Number 2 right now. I just want to make that as a default and not necessarily goodwill like what happened this last time. So that's, that's what I'm looking for. I've got a motion that will go over everything I said, but I'm taking it.
I think you should make the motion.
Okay. I move to adopt the attached resolution proposing an amendment to the Brevard County Home Rule Charter to align school board member residence areas with the county commission districts, to authorize staff to submit the proposed charter amendment and ballot language to the three attorney panel with review proposed charter amendments for compliance with the Florida Constitution, Florida law, and the Brevard County Charter, and to determine whether proposed amendment embraces only one subject. Three, if at least two members of the, of the panel approve the proposed amendment, provide for placement of the proposed amendment at the referendum held concurrently with the November 5, 2024 general election. Four, if the deadline should pass before the panel is able to successfully complete its review, the amendment will be placed on the 2026 ballot. That is the motion, Mr.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay. There's a motion, there's a second. Commissioner Felton?
Chair.
Commissioner Goodson?
Question. Commissioner, can you tell me, with the three panels reviewing it, what would, could, do you have a cost that's going to cost the county?
I'm going to pump that over. There's an hourly cost, Mr. Chair, with permission, pump that over to the county attorney.
Absolutely. Go ahead, please.
I think we have a one-time estimated cost of $15,000 for the three attorney panel review.
So this is, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Commissioner.
This is such a great idea, Commissioner. Why would we not get with the school board to share in the cost?
Mr., Mr. Chair?
Go ahead. It's open. You guys can have an open discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, at a goodwill, the school board aligned with us. So, and we're talking $7,500. I think that that's fair. What, the big savings here is the $30,000 every 10 years. Now, the mapping software that we buy and, or we don't buy, we license, if the school board license, we now can do that in combined. The legal notices now can be combined if, if we should go this way. And most importantly, again, 250 hours of staff time could be split there. So, you know, I, I would like the school board to pony up $7,500, but I certainly don't want, I don't want this to go down for, for the split of that.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Felton?
This would not happen until 2031, correct? That's next redistricting, 2031. So with, with all due respect, I think the, the board could decide in, in early 2028 whether it wants to take this issue up and put it before the voters that cycle. And if the voters agree to that, that, that would still be in place by 2031. So I would let a future board do this.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion fails. Okay. Candidly, Commissioner Tobias, it's a great idea. The timing's just off, I think, is what the problem is, but ultimately speaking, we'll get there sooner or later. All right. Letter to Palm Bay regarding low-income senior citizens' homestead tax exemption. Once again, I believe this is yours, Commissioner Tobias.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And first of all, I want to thank one of my constituent, constituents for bringing this, bringing this to my attention. I went to my campaign, actually, PO box, and he had sent a snail mail letter bringing this to my attention. So I thought it was very interesting. Brevard County enacted an exemption in 2007 after 75.31% of Brevard County voters approved an amendment to the state constitution. This additional homestead tax exemption for low-income seniors is authorized by Section 60 of Article 7 of the Florida Constitution. What it does is if you own your permanent residency as of January 1, you're approved for the 25,000, additional $25,000 homestead exemption, 65 years of age as of January 1. Applicant, all persons living a household file federal returns must provide a copy of their prior year's federal tax return for verification. The low-income threshold for qualifying is calculated annually by the Department of Revenue. To put it in perspective, in 2004, that is merely $36,614. 11 of the 16 municipalities, we offer this, as I just said, 11 of the 16 municipalities also offer this homestead exemption for low-income seniors. So there are five that do not. And let me tell you why I'm picking on Palm Bay here. First of all, I represent a large portion of Palm Bay. The constituent that brought it to my attention is from Palm Bay. And most importantly, Palm Bay has a 6%, almost 7% tax increase that they will be budgeting here. And that sounds pretty offensive. The good news to that is they were also talking about a 2 mil that came outside of that. So for taxpayers, taxpayers in Palm Bay, it's, could be worse. The other ones, by the way, are Rockledge, Melbourne, which is talking about a 6.5% tax increase, and Indy Atlantic, which is talking about a 7.23% increase. So again, the mayor of Palm Bay claims, you know, very conservative, but if we look at the approved tax increases of the last years, we would see that 24, 25, 2.6, 23, 24, 2.9, 22, 23, 15.3% tax increase, and 21, 22, a 2.5% tax increase. To be very clear, they play games over there, but you can't play games with the Department of Revenue as defined by a tax increase. The Department of Revenue very, very clearly says if it's above the rollback, it's a tax increase. And of course, Palm Bay has have to, had to put in whatever, a half-page ad in the Florida Today, maybe a quarter-page ad, advertising their tax increases. So what I would like to do, and first of all, I'd like to, sorry, I'd like to thank the city manager of Palm Bay that reached out ahead of time. That was, that was very kind. So in closing, let me tell you what, on July 24, what Governor DeSantis had to say at a press conference. He said, quote, "Why are you trying to raise property tax in the middle of some of the worst inflation we have ever seen?" He goes on to say, "Why don't you manage things better instead of trying to come and jack up people's taxes?" I think that's pretty damn clear. So all I'm asking here is, I've attached a letter. I would like the board to co-sign here, asking the city of Palm Bay to offer the exact same exemption to low-income seniors here. Not that that'll counter the tax increase that they're trying to levy on the rest of their citizens, but I, I think it would carry more weight with this board. I tried to, I think the letter is attached, I think I tried to make it pretty nice. I'll tell you the copy that, should this board go in a different direction. The letter that will come out of my office with a appropriate disclaimer on it will be nowhere near as nice. We talk about low-income, we talk about low-income housing. Here's an opportunity for, that we already take advantage of, that Palm Bay doesn't. I, I'd just like the letter to go out, and I fully support, by the way, any other board member here sending a similar letter to the other cities that don't participate in that. Again, goodness gracious, the snail mail letter I got from a constituent who'll go nameless brought that to my attention. I really, really appreciate you taking the time and the effort to do that. And here's my attempt to help get it fixed for you. I wish we could do it, you know, laterally up here, but we can certainly provide some pressure to Palm Bay to do the right thing. So that's the request. The letter is attached to the, to the agenda.
Commissioner Felton?
Don't worry, it won't take long. Just to clarify, the $50,000 is off the, the value on the municipal taxes. It's, it's not any other item on a term notice or tax bill, right?
My understanding, municipal, correct.
Yes, sir. I'll second your motion if you want to make it.
Is that a motion, Commissioner Tobias?
So the motion is to offer as the chair to sign the attached letter to be sent to the city of Palm Bay on behalf of the board. That's the motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Tobias, seconded by Commissioner Felton. Any more discussion? Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Tobias, if you wouldn't mind reading the letter, and I, I just don't have it in front of me. So if you wouldn't mind doing that. And there is a real crunch on our, especially our elderly people right now trying to make ends meet. Like you're saying, you've got a good handle on that. So I hope the cities will kind of have an ear to that a bit because people are really having a hard time right now making bills. So.
Okay. Thank you. The letter here is Dear Mayor Medunit CC to the other Article 7, Sections 60 of the Florida Constitution, Florida State Statute, Section 10196.075, 2A and B, Grant County Amunicipal Governments the Authority to Enact an Additional Homestead Exemption for Low-Income Seniors Over the Age of 65 to Meet Certain Criteria. This exemption can be up to $50,000 under subsection A and a, or up to the assessed value of the property under subsection B. To be considered low-income under statute, the senior has to be, has to have an annual income of less than $36,614 for 2024. New paragraph, senior citizens in our community, especially low senior, low-income seniors are a vulnerable population with limited opportunities to improve their financial outlook. Brevard County and 11 cities within the county have enacted one or both of these exemptions. Unfortunately, Palm Bay is not one of these municipalities. In addition, it is proposing a 6.92% tax increase. New paragraph, on July 24, 2024, Governor DeSantis held a press conference at St. Pete College and spoke directly to this point. Governor DeSantis asked, quote, "Why are you trying to raise property tax in the midst of some of the worst inflation we've ever seen?" Governor DeSantis followed with the recommendation, quote, "Why don't you manage things better instead of trying to come and jack up people's taxes?" New paragraph, "The tax increases proposed by the city of Palm Bay will create a financial burden across the socioeconomic spectrum, especially considering the rising cost of homeowners, insurance, healthcare medications, and other essential items." Both of the current tax increase are in direct conflict with the goal of increasing affordable housing. The Board of County Commissioners urges the city of Palm Bay to enact an ordinance implementing low-income senior citizen additional homestead exemption. These exemptions will help mitigate potential disastrous consequences of the proposed tax increases of Palm Bay. Sincerely, and Jason Steele. Chair, that's the letter. That's, this is the kind version, the one that will come out of my office with the disclaimer will not be so kind.
May I, sir?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Tobias, I like it. And I do know the non-kind version that would come out would be tougher. I think we might get a little more attention if you take off Governor DeSantis's thing in there. Just if, if you would consider that part.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, sir.
Sure. I, I don't mind getting rid of, I don't mind getting rid of that. They were direct quotes, but I don't mind getting rid of that.
It would be a little softer. So.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries. I don't think it's going to work, John, but it's a good idea. All right. So we are on J5, approval for partial funding of Phase 2 study for Port St. John Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant.
This is, we put it on this afternoon. We had spoken with the federal government representative who's responsible for these grants, and we were told that we're in good shape for the grant, but we needed to get this taken care of because the funding for this particular grant, they have to spend the dollars that are available by October 1. And the upper echelon felt that what you see in here would be necessary for them to, to have that approval. This will provide $700,000 grant for funding of a study that is going to help us with the MIR grant, which is a combination, a Department of Defense grant that helps us with installation at, in Port St. John to bring over water, wastewater to, from beachside over onto the mainland. It helps with affordable housing, resiliency in the river, and a variety of other avenues. And it's something we definitely need to do in that area anyway. So we're looking for board approval.
Okay. Ed, do you have something you want to add to this?
No, I thought that was a pretty good summary.
It was a pretty good summary. Sandra Sullivan, I know you're waving your card. I see you, Sandra. I haven't lost your card today.
Well, I wouldn't want to speak out, say you forgot my card, and be escorted out by the deputies again.
Well, we can arrange that if you want.
So at the last meeting, we, we were discussing Port St. John. And this, the red line here is capacity. This is 2024 right here. Look, look how far up we are. Almost double what the capacity of the plant is according to this. Crazy. And also in that report is this one. This is the federal lands here in North Merritt Island, and we're developing that for wastewater. So then we talked about earlier today about the hydrology study that I brought up, and this is the, the 10-year flooding. Kind of interesting when you do spend a half a million dollars for a study, that you don't include the space Florida portion. You might want to look at that, Chair, right there. See, missing from the study. This is very much a floodplain. This floods all the time. Has the flooding on North Merritt Island has filled this? More than, this room, more than any other topic, citizen-driven. I want to read something here. So this is, the number wasn't brought up, but this is a 1.717 million to be funded from utility services. So what we're talking about here is the development of the space Florida leased lands is being constrained because their sewage is going to Space Force on the base, and that's at near capacity. So we're at Nbeds, and they were like, oh, we want, you know, a letter from Nbed saying we'd support putting a temporary line, ha-ha, to, to, to Sykes Creek sewage plant. But this is about development, and it says, it also talks, you guys brought up affordable housing. So the change is made to Senate Bill 102 in 2024 is to put, allows affordable housing on those federal-owned lands. Problem with all of this is there's no, there's no property taxes paid for that. So you're literally putting the cost of all this infrastructure on the people for business, and then you come here last meeting with the EDC and you want tax payments for the companies that are going there? I mean, this is, this is just, I can't comprehend this, that we, first of all, are being so irresponsible with Port St. John being over capacity. And then, you know, you're looking for, you're looking for the people to pay 1.71 million for something that should be paid by the state and the federal government because this is something that is for them. Not for, this is, this is, this is another classic example of we the money versus we the people, and you're going to burden the people for we the money interests. Crazy. for we the money interests. Crazy.
Okay. Anybody have a motion?
I do. I want to make a motion to approve. And I also want to mention that this is an enterprise fund, so it works like a business. The money we invest in this, which we have to do, it's over capacity. It's, the business of the enterprise fund will eventually pay back all of these funds down the road and do a great job helping our citizens with growth. So, I just wanted to mention that from the...
Thank you very much. Is there a second to Commissioner Pritchett's motion?
Second.
Okay. There's a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, seconded by Commissioner Tavaia. Is there any more discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries. Okay. We're on public comment, and we have Sandra Sullivan.
Sandra Sullivan. So, I am going to talk about, I don't, I forgot to put a card in for this one. It's done. It's a done deal, but I'm going to talk about it anyway. So, this was F. 6 under consent. This was permission to advertise or repeal ordinance 8929, and this was from the item. And so, basically, I looked up on this, on the Florida DEP's, sorry, St. John's River Water Management Site.
Sandra, what are you, I'm completely lost on what you're talking about.
Well, I, you know, that's okay. You know, I just want to talk about something that I forgot to put in a card in for. If that's okay, if you guys want to object to that, I'll just stop talking about it.
Morris.
But I, it's up to you.
I'm asking Morris. I'm not asking the commission.
My time's ticking away.
Thank you very much. Morris?
It's up to you. The policy provides that consent agendas for discussing business items of the county that are not on the agenda. You're not supposed to discuss items that are otherwise on the agenda.
Being that the commission would like to hear this, go ahead, Sandra.
Okay. Thank you. I just, I just wanted to communicate. So, this was for putting in water line, and this was a funding source essentially as hookups by developers. They would pay a connection fee. And that was, you know, revised a couple times with some ordinance agreements. And so, now, we're like saying, okay, the line's all put in, and it's all a done deal. And I'm, I'm pretty confused about this because, I just have the paper here, because I looked up on St. John's site on the CUP, and this is the lake right there that, this lake right here. And there's no water line there. There's no water. There's not, it's not in the CUP. So, it's almost like, it seems to be a misrepresentation in the item, but this has been handled, and the water line is there. But according to St. John's site, it's not there. So, I just wanted to say, you know, I've been coming to these meetings for almost six years. And it honestly, it gets frustrating. It gets frustrating coming here, and I'll just say again, I've never seen a commission like this particular commission when it comes to not respecting the will of the people and seemingly not having the interests of the people in mind and always being we the money. That's my perception. So many items. Have a nice day.
All right. Let's go to board reports. Commissioner, I mean, Frank Abadi.
I have no report.
Morris?
No report, sir.
Rita Pritchett?
I will wait till next meeting.
Commissioner Goodson doesn't have a report?
No, try to do one.
Commissioner Felton?
I'll just say one thing real quick.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, when we were on the discussion about the KBB contract, I wanted to recognize Julie Braga, who's on TDC. I think she brought up Pineda and was a voice for that. So, I'm glad that Pineda's included in there and that Julie made a case for it.
Thanks very much. I have a real quick report. I was in Washington. We had tremendous meetings. I think we had some success. The decision on the Bright Line Fund will be coming in October. I don't know what it's going to be yet, but I have passed this booklet around on who we met with, where we met, all the other things, and I'm hoping and praying that we get a good result. So, I'm done there. Now, Commissioner Tavaia?
Thank you. This is the vice vice chair. So, today is National Root Beer Float Day. The useful Florida fact, Telstar One launched on July 10, 1962 from Cape Canaveral, the world's first active communication satellite. AT&amp;T used the satellite to test basic features of communication via space. This day in Florida history, on this day in 1763, Augustine Prevost arrived in Florida and was appointed as the interim military governor of West Florida after seven-year war ended. Prevost was appointed to the West Indies, where he served as deputy inspector general in Kingston, Jamaica. And then, most importantly, the county employee is Morgan Roth. She's a program assistant with the Family and Consumer Services at the UF Extension Service Department. She's been there three years. This is what the director had to say about her. I'm delighted to write this recommendation for Megan Roth, who's been an outstanding member of the University of Florida IFAS Brevard County team for the past three years. Morgan has demonstrated exceptional skills, dedication, and professionalism in her role, making her an invaluable asset to our organization. From the moment Morgan joined our team, she worked to strengthen our marketing efforts. Her expertise in the area immediately evident, and we were thrilled to have her capabilities and knowledge on our team. She took the initiative to work collaboratively with all program areas, providing assistance wherever needed. Morgan's efforts were instrumental in establishing protocols that gave her office a professional look across all programming areas. Morgan's impact particularly notable in her work with Farmers Market at Wickham Park. She worked to attract more vendors, clientele, especially after disruptions caused by COVID-19. In addition to the marketing responsibilities, Morgan also serves as the Farmers Market Manager, overseeing day-to-day operations and managing the Double Bucks Supplement Nutritional Assistance Program Dollar Grant. This grant ensures that consumers on SNAP can purchase fresh fruit and vegetables, effectively increasing their buying power and promoting healthier eating habits. Over the last years, Morgan spearheaded two additional marketing campaigns aimed at attracting more consumers to the market. Her creativity and strategic thinking have significantly contributed to the market's growth and success. Morgan's commitment to professional development is evident through her participation in the Lean Six Sigma Program. During this program, she worked on a library project to streamline the process of adding books to shelves, showcasing her ability to excel beyond her primary responsibilities. Her success in the project highlighted her versatility and problem-solving skills, further providing for value to our organization. In conclusion, Morgan Roth is a remarkable employee who consistently exceeds expectation. Her contributions to our team and community have been substantial, and her positive attitude and willingness to take on new challenges are truly commendable. We are proud to present Morgan Roth as a worthy employee of the Brevard County and wholeheartedly recommend her in any future endeavors. It almost sounds like they're trying to get rid of you here, saying you'll go great other places, but you're always welcome here. Thank you so much. We really appreciate all you do for Brevard County. That's the report, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay. I believe we are finished with this. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, second. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The motion carries. Thank you so much. Well, that went a little bit longer than I anticipated.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program sponsor and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.